Evening, everybody. This is Thursday, today is Thursday, September 21st. It's 5:33 in our call. This study session, work session, I should say, to order.
No gavel.
I don't need a gavel.
Okay, well, again, thanks, everybody, for coming. I think evenings work best for everybody, so hopefully we'll get some, a few things finalized tonight. One being kind of setting that chart for the year with our goals. We came up, I think the group did really good work last time to establish three categories for goals. And so, within each category, and kind of based on the conversation that took place around the table last time, in EA, we drafted some kind of sample, some draft goals that Dr. Opp was going to take us through. And then Faith's gonna move us forward around our conversation about superintendent eval. And then we'll have a little break, then we'll talk about the board's self-evaluation, and finish up with kind of first look together at the proposed governance handbook, team handbook, that was linked in the Friday report last week, if anybody had a chance to kind of glance at it. But it's kind of a thick document to think that there's any chance that we're gonna finalize it tonight. But to kind of get a good, a good look at it, and Faith, Luciano and Faith are gonna walk us through that process. And I, again, I think I'd be aware of everybody's time and, and respect that, and try to be finished before 7:30. If we finish a little bit early, there's no reason to sit around. You'll free, there may be some leftovers. Your wife's not home yet, you can throw those in the microwave. I don't know about the air fryer for warming things up.
Very good.
Very good.
Does it work?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I'm telling ya. You can have mine, and I'm gonna get one like Keith has.
So yours is less than smart?
It's not smart. Completely manually operated.
As long as it doesn't have files, you're still in the right side.
Susan? I'm gonna turn over.
Absolutely. So, it looks like we have some connection, right?
Yes. Yeah. Did you guys hear what they're doing? Some cybersecurity updating with our computer system tonight? Got the email. What, Tuesday? Something like that. It's like, oh. So, they said could be in and out between 5:00 and 6:00. But it sounds like, it sounds like Brandon got here a little early today to make sure we're gonna be okay.
We have a hotspot just in case. Oh, let me just connect, Susan, sorry.
Okay, don't worry.
Oh, and one more housekeeping item. Are we good to go for, for recording?
It's right there, it's in the middle.
Monica was worried she was gonna have to use her phone. And if she had to use her phone to record, then we're gonna need to speak up. But I think we're gonna be good to go.
You guys are good.
All right, so I thought we would just look at these one at a time. So, we looked, last time we met, at some general areas around student achievement, around facilities, and around parent and community engagement. And so, what I'd like to do is start with the student achievement goal. You all have it in your, have a copy of this in your folders. And I'd like us to highlight or underline words that you feel are important within this goal, and then circle words or, and/or phrases about which you have questions or need clarification, or would like clarification. So, just for the student achievement goal, there are highlighters in the boxes, in the pens, and all that kind of stuff. So, how many would like to?
I love school, can I just say that?
Brought your own backpack?
I brought my own backpack, I have my glasses. Because if there was a test afterward, I'd be in heaven. I got up extra early on my ACT day because I was so excited.
We got beat 78 to nothing the night before I took the ACTs, ballgame. It was not, I did not, I mean, I think I slept well, but I was, didn't want to get up in the morning.
Important are highlighted and, or underlined and circled. Anything you have questions about or need clarification about? Does anybody need any more time on number one? Okay. So, I'd like to just take a moment and kind of just go around, and if each of you could kind of choose a word that you felt was important out of number one, and if it, if it's already been said, well, just, you can say it again, it's fine. I'm gonna ask Faith to start.
One underline I had was measured. So, the goal has to have a result that can be measurable. That was important to me.
Thank you.
Group, increase the number of scoring proficiently of students.
Thank you.
So, I like the action words, you know, improve. Absolutely.
Absolutely, thank you.
I had to say an improve and increase.
Improve and increase, thank you.
And accomplish.
The kind of reduce and increase. Those two.
Jamie?
I had a number, but kind of like Anthony, mostly the action words, improve, measure, increase, and reduce.
Proficient, proficient, thank you. Awesome. And the other piece I would really like to know about is if you have, if you have questions about any of the verbiage or phrasing or anything like that, that we can talk through.
I have a typo.
Thank you.
In the line of three, sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
We will accomplish this goals.
Oh, thank you.
These go, this goal, these goals.
Right, but you would read over it quickly enough.
Appreciate that.
Agreement, a number.
Yes.
So, that was just that typo. I have a question, but it's not related to verbiage, actually.
Okay.
Well, it's a question slash comment. So, if I'm a teacher and I'm looking at this, this applies to me, so I can do this, right? I can, in my class. If my, I'm a principal, I can look at my school. If I'm a department, exceptional students, I can look at this for my department. And if I'm the district, I can look at the aggregate. So, I was just thinking, questioning, could anybody use this goal? And yes, even a classroom teacher, can you drill it down to their kids?
Even a parent that works with interventions and things like that.
I mean, bus drivers, when you think about it, because how do you get Sues to it from school? Everybody plays a part, and Sues too.
Teresa?
Yeah, you know, it's just a thing, it's minimally proficient. So, I don't really know what that range looks like. I mean, I know whatever is a proficient score, minimally, is at the bottom. My stillness to know what that would look like in total.
So, there's four categories along the continuum. Highly proficient, proficient, partially proficient, and minimally proficient. And usually, for the sake of ease, they kind of draw that line between partially proficient and proficient, and just say, when they talk about kids passing, that's what they mean. So, that's, that's kind of the.
It's, it's, it's hard to, I would say, it's hard to quantify because it changes over time, depending on the test, depending on the cut scores that the Arizona Board of Education decides on. All of those things, depending on the particular convoluted numbers that they do to, to figure it out. So, it doesn't always stay the same, but, but those, those quadrants. Categories, I guess, stay the same.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Step cycle.
Oh, step cycle, yeah.
Because if I'm a parent, I don't know what a step cycle, what was a step cycle?
Yeah, yeah, that's great. We can definitely add some language in here. So, the step cycle is a, and I don't know if you want to talk.
Go ahead.
We started working on, it's a, it's actually a continuous improvement model, a data cycle. So, we call it the step cycle in, in our district, because it's something that we created to help our teachers move through looking at student data, their achievement data, and, and trying to analyze what that data tells them about student learning, help them identify areas of focus for all of their students, and make a plan for instruction. And please feel free to, for the next cycle.
Unit. It's, yeah, stands for strategic thinking with evidence and planning. So, the evidence is the data, the planning is how that data informs the planning of instruction, the next part of the, the cycle. It's a collaborative structure, you know, so it's grade level structure, grade level collaborative teams. Middle school, it's content area teams. Actually, grade level teams get together and look at it too, because we really focus a lot on literacy skills. So, whether you're teaching science or math or social studies, a big part of that success is that literacy and vocabulary development, things like that. So, the idea is that when we first started exploring this model to improve, we surveyed teachers, and we, and we surveyed, and we sat in on teams, coaches sat in on teams, and just kind of compiled a list of all the different kinds of data that they looked at. And across the district, we had just a huge, broad array of data that people were looking at. So, you know, we talked about drip, we're data rich and information poor. We had all kinds of data out there, but we weren't focused enough to get any good information out of the data. So, with the step, one thing we did, we were strategic about reducing the number of data sets that we, that we look at, you know, some of those more powerful data sets about, around literacy through our, through our core curriculum, around Galileo, and, so that's, that's kind of how that, that came about.
Anyone else have questions or?
Yeah, one more?
Yes, absolutely.
The and/or, does that mean sometimes, so when, whether we're looking at Galileo or whether we're looking at AASA, but how would the, so why, why is there and/or?
We were thinking that it could be an and or an or.
Okay. You're looking at one or the other, or both?
Yes.
Okay, to, to see where we are. The, you know, one, one thing I would say is that we have, over the years, been, again, with the changes in testing and those kinds of things, Galileo really tries to keep up with those changes and change their testing questions to mimic the AASA test, and to help us use it as a predictor of how students will do on the state test.
And it's got a pretty good track record.
Yeah, yeah.
Fairly predictive of AASA. And the benefit of Galileo is we, we give it three times during the year, as opposed to just once. Yeah, so we can, we can track growth a little better than that.
So, that probably is a bonus. We don't have three times. I feel like we've been using it consistently for such a long time.
Yeah.
But also, that's exactly what we use for our teacher and principal evaluations, too. The Galileo data, we don't use AASA, just all Galileo. So, just that alignment.
One thing, the AASA data doesn't come in in time for us to finalize our evaluation.
No.
But the AASA is the final, you know, that's the final measure by which our school letter grades are, are based, so. One word I liked is improve, and I'm gonna stop talking here in a minute. But I think that remembers like the early days of the standards movement and the high stakes testing. There were school districts that were really applauded for having these huge gains in just a, a year or two. And you could have groups like West Ed or other groups come in and show you how, you know, how to do that, how to have a shift in your student achievement. Well, over time, it pretty much got debunked that, you know, just because you're teaching kids about the structure and format of the test, and, and, you know, and all these different strategies to take the test, that doesn't necessarily mean they're learning more. And then Marzano came out with his, you know, research, and he said, you know, a shift, shift and drift, that's, that's not real life. What we're looking for is incremental improvement over time. So, if you want to shift, then improve by 2%, 3%, 4% incrementally over time. And over, over time, in five or six years, that's gonna look like a shift, and it should reflect more lasting and valid learning. So, I, I like the idea of just, you know, we, we need to continue to improve. I don't think we can, should realistically try to set a goal where we're gonna shoot the top out of something in one year. I think that promotes classroom instruction. Sometimes it focuses more on the structure of the test than on the standards that kids need to master.
Please also feel free to, you know, they, these are not in the final, final format, I would say, obviously. It is a draft, and so, still some wordsmithing to do and things like that. But I just wanted to put in some of the things that you were asking about in terms of the step cycle in here. So, we were, we had it in, in there in parentheses, so that we knew what we were talking about there. Anything else on goal one?
It's the longest one.
It's the longest one.
It's the most important one.
It's the most important one. It's our foundational.
The one thing I would add is that under, under strategies, rigors listed twice. Once under habit and once under personalized learning. And it's also our district-wide focus area for, for all of our schools, all of our classrooms.
Collaboration is also in habit and personalized learning. So, there are lots of, there's lots of alignment between those two areas. It's a good thing. All right, facilities. So, again, if you'll take a moment to read the, read the goal, draft goal, highlight or underline words that are important, and then circle words and/or phrases about which you have questions or need clarification. I'm hearing lots of clicks. It must mean that everybody's almost done. I like that, I like having, because you never know, right?
It's a good tell.
So, I'd like to go around again, if we can, and just talk about an important word that you, that you saw within this, within this goal. Adele, would you start?
Engagement.
Engagement, thank you. Jamie?
I had student learning.
Awesome.
Prioritize.
Prioritize.
I had all the action words, too, evaluate, prioritize, and positively impact. You know what, when I see this whole thing, I'm thinking revenue sources.
Good job, Mr. T.
That's the key, that's the key, right?
Oh, that's probably what it is, absolutely.
Teresa, I have evaluate and prioritize.
Yeah.
I had student learning.
Great, thank you. So, how about areas that you have questions about or, or need clarification on within this goal?
Minimum standard.
Yeah.
Great question.
Yeah, you referred to minimum standards.
Close to, to at least minimum standards, which means we believe that we're not at minimum standards.
Well, we don't know for sure. So, the School Facilities Board in early 2000s established what they called minimum standards for school, school building facilities. And they went out and did walkthroughs all over the state, had the, what they called the efficiencies program, where they brought schools up to that minimum standard. But after 2008, with the big recession, that kind of hasn't been part of the conversation much. And now, this past year, Governor Hobbs has kind of rejected it and wants to, you know, put some money in for some teams to go around and start doing some observations. But Arcadis, that's doing our work right now, evaluating our buildings, they, two of those people used to work for SFB. So, they still have at least the original minimum standards documents. They need to be updated. They've actually put out a, a call for people to volunteer to be on a committee to, to review them, especially around safety, because the original minimum standards didn't really say much about school safety. It was just not that long after Columbine, and it was definitely before school shootings became a, a part of our everyday psyche, you know. So, I, I applied and got some people to recommend me, and I don't know if they'll take me or not. But I think I'd be a good, a good committee to serve on, especially given that the age of our buildings and the additional challenges of making them, you know, physically safe places when they weren't built with that in mind.
Right, I think, and I think because, because we don't, those minimum standards haven't been updated yet. You know, we have the, the old minimum standards, but there are certain, I, I guess there are certain minimum standards that we find, that we, you know, as we go around and, and look at our facilities and, and work with Arcadis, that, you know, with our 60 buildings over 50 years of age.
60 buildings, more than 50 years of age, wow.
Yeah, there are some, there are some needs, I would say, yeah.
I would think of the people that are working in them could probably tell you what.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And we know we can't fix it all, so that's why prioritize comes in.
Right.
I just joked that if we took all the surface mounted conduit and laid it end to end, it'd probably go like from here to the moon, or around the world for three times. All the stuff that's been added over the last 50 or 60 years.
Well, then to, because Anthony highlighted multiple revenue sources. So, what might some of those be? When, my question would be, well, where would we look, or how would we secure those?
SFB is the most readily available one. We use it mostly for repair and replace for equipment that fails. That's the building renewal grant process. But the legislature can, annually through their budget, they can place money into SFB with some earmark, with certain earmarks. So, last year, there was some discussion, and I don't think it got anywhere, but, well, I know it didn't get anywhere, but there was quite a bit of discussion about the legislature earmarking some, some allocation for SFB to take a look at buildings that are beyond their useful life, and, and look into a building replacement program. And the group we work with, the FRG, the Education Finance Reform Group, that's probably gonna be something we push for again this year in, in the legislature. Just some of these buildings are, I mean, Pecan Grove, all these little wings of CMU blocks, well, they're gonna be, if you just leave them alone, they'll stand for a couple hundred years, right? But that doesn't mean that they're viable education environments now, you know. So, that's kind of, you know, what we're, what we're pushing for. But the other, the other is, obviously, bond is the big local option, and that's a heavy lift that's going out to the voters. Last time we had a bond, it was coming off in 2008. So, that's when we were, we had an 85% reduction in our capital budgets, and a lot of deferred maintenance, but that's also when school safety was a big thing. So, a big part of our bond from 2014 went into safety expenditures, you know, hardening, hardening the targets. And so, that, that didn't bring up to date the environment. And then we also bought a lot of technology with that bond. So, really, we've been kind of on a deferred maintenance program. And the guys do great. I mean, when they came to do our walkthroughs from the fire department, I ran into Robert Riamas, who was one of the guys in the walkthroughs. He goes, "I can't believe what a great job your maintenance people do when I walk into those buildings, because they're old." You know, I said, "Yeah, they are old." So, you tell, you know, tell your guys that they do a good job of keeping them, you know, maintenance and keeping those things up. And, you know, we passed all the fire code regulations and things like that. But the fact is, they're old.
Speaking of old, are there any?
Yes, I just had a birthday. Thank you for asking.
Are there any programs, city, state, county, federal, and would we have any facilities that would make a historical classification?
Fourth Avenue Junior High is individually listed on, which is why we don't have to have an elevator.
So, their funds do come in to?
No, we don't get any money for it. Yes, we get an attaboy.
You're 100, congratulations.
You know.
That's too bad.
You know, we don't have the ability to put any money into something like this, but some towns around the state have taken their historic old school buildings and done a partnership with the city or with a nonprofit or something, and, and turned it into something else. Like Aho, I don't know, they've got with some arts company and the art nonprofit and the city, and they got together, they turned their old high school, which is a beautiful old Spanish high school, into like an artist's co-op, where they've got some apartments, they've got some studio space, they've got all this kind of stuff that's right there in the heart of the downtown. Casa Grande did a joint venture with their old high school. I mean, that'd be a really cool thing to do with like Fourth Avenue Junior High, or, you know, it's 1920, Roosevelt's 1926, both just beautiful buildings. Yeah.
So, I was hoping there was some sort of outside source that would help to modernize and maintain. Because, I mean, look at Main Street, they go through a lot of effort to maintain that. They said you got historical houses. You know, we start getting into disposable world, and history's gone.
Right.
Yes.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, and, and that's how buildings are designed and built now. 50 years max, build a new one.
That's why we want to keep these old ones, because they were built to last.
Big glass boxes.
Unless an opportunity came up where the city wanted to move into it, or something like you were just talking about, where they're gonna use it as a historical in exchange for property and building of new school.
Right. And that's what, I mean, like, right now, in the weekly report with the history that I'm doing, that's the, that phase, like the 1940s and 50s, where the city and the school district did a lot of different swapping of properties, so the school could, district could build schools where it was necessary, and the city could, you know, like, for example, Second Avenue Grammar School, well, now that's the fire department, right? And we got the whole post this property out of that, that swap.
Oh, yeah. Keela versus Jim, or not Jim, but Shop Cost is from the MCIS. I wonder if anybody there would sponsor or restore that building.
We actually, I think, made some headway just recently.
Really?
With SFB to get that, to do the asbestos abatement, because that's the big thing. Do the asbestos abatement, and then we can start tackling the roof and the windows. But it's been a, I don't know how many times we've been turned down for that particular building.
From SFB.
Yeah, from SFB. Yeah, from SFB. SFB, SFOB?
SFOB, yeah.
They changed it, SFOB now, I think.
Yep. I think it might be changing again. I saw some, I don't know. Any other questions about facility, about the facilities goal? Thank you all. Our last goal is around community engagement. Again, pretty, pretty short. It has a lot of, a lot of stuff in there, so again, just highlight those or underline the words that are important to you and then circle any words or phrases about which you have questions or need clarification. We're going to go around and do important words, and I'm going to start with Luciano.
Put effectively engage as evidence and parent engagement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, these are all wonderful, but I'm looking at parent engagement.
Okay, thank you.
Met parent and community engagement.
I put school events.
School, thank you.
Partnerships.
Partnerships, thank you.
I've put all those things, but I'm going to say parents.
Engage parents and community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on these or anything that came up that you want, you would like to talk about or have questions about with the goal?
I have a question, social media analytics.
So we can tell exactly how many likes there are on certain posts, how many parents engagement viewed the video, how long they view the video, when they stopped watching the video, every detail.
Impressions.
So when a parent opens up the newsletter?
We can tell how many, we can tell how many people opened up the newsletter. We can see where they clicked on the newsletter, so we can say, okay, which stories actually have most movement, right? Call it hotspots. Oh, this story really was connected with parents, so we do more of those stories, so we pick up all those different.
Recording, I'm moving too.
No. This is all provided from Instagram, Facebook, you know, Twitter. Twitter, they don't actually have too much movement on Twitter, but Facebook is still our largest audience.
Really? How interesting.
Early on, when we first started the community newsletter, the monthly newsletter, I don't know if it's you or Christine, is it? You know this Dale Ponder?
Oh, that was my name.
Yeah, I know Dale Ponder. He opens our, he's like always the first one to open it up, and he opens it up like three or four times.
I know it was like nine or fifteen.
That's because he's with Crane and they're going to copy us.
Soon thereafter, Crane had their own newsletter. Imitation is what letters.
Yeah. There's flattery, yeah.
So I would, one of the things that I just thought about is, for, for example, the kids at Hope Tunnel. So what, having the communications director get the information out ahead of time, invite us, invite the public, parents, whatever. I think that's really, really helpful, and I think some of this is predicated on the school having events. So we have some parent, parent organizations or principals who are very thoughtful about getting people in, and then there are others that, that not enough is happening at that school to bring parents in. So I would say, working with your principals and through EA to say, okay, look at that analytic. How many, how, of these junior highs, who's bringing in the news to look at the race, you know, the race cars or what's happening on the east county versus the north end? Try to look at what are those principals and those school staffs doing to get people to engage? Because if you build it, they will come, I do believe it. And if you're not opening the door, you can't just assume that they'll say, well, I'm going to show up and see what happens.
Yeah, and after COVID, it became.
Right.
Almost like a re, like a reinvention of those activities, you know? They had to dig back in and look at their kind of standard operating procedures and various activities. So, yeah, they're.
Well, you have to invite.
We've got to keep data too, you know, we, we have some, they'll keep signing sheets and things like that to try to see how many people attend.
That's a great conversation that we do have with, you know, admin council or whatever about.
Because I follow all, all of the schools on Facebook, and so it's not just what they're putting out there, but it's they're having something. They're planting trees for Arbor Day. They're doing things that bring parents and the media and school board members and community members in, and, and then some aren't doing as much.
Thank you.
When these goals are set up or established each year, does anything go out to the parents about how they're established with the board?
About the process?
Or do they, I mean, because if not, and they may just think that somebody creates them in the dark and it's not.
That'd be a good piece of, that'd be a good piece of community information.
Even for our staff, you're a para at a tondo, do you know who's driving this?
Our principals do, but yeah, we should get that out to our teachers who staff too. It's a thoughtful process, it's not just somebody.
But they also know who to point to and say, hey, I didn't like that.
Right.
Or hey, that's valuable, we need to keep that goal going.
And it also helps us when we communicate with people, saying, look, this is the direction the board has set for our district this year.
Yeah.
This carries some weight, you know?
All principals also, because we design, once the board goals are finalized, we will design a nice poster for them. And they have those presentations at the school site, so the staff members obviously have heard about it. They know that that's what they're working towards, but as far as to the parents, we can easily include in the community newsletter and find out how many people clicked on it.
Your board members decided.
And I think if we do that for the community newsletter, it'd be great to, to put that video in our, in our district newsletter as well. So teachers can see that process.
Our team won, yes, that's true.
And then next year, so generally, we try to do this in June, so it drives summer work. So if in our May meeting, we are, in our meeting and we publicly announce, you know, June is, is the time when we're going to be setting goals, in case there's somebody out there that has an idea, hey, we really think that the school should focus on this, a parent, a community member, or if you stay with that goal, I have another idea for an action step, so that people know if they want to weigh in, that would be a way to, to say, hey, that was a great goal, keep it going, or have you thought about?
My in from both sides, everybody is objective, focused on the goal and how to sharpen it for the next year.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much for your input. Again, we're going to do some, a little bit of wordsmithing and on these, just to polish them up a little bit. But anything else that, that anyone wants to say about, about the goals in general?
I think they look great.
Good. Thank you for your ideas. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, and thank you for taking what our big ideas were last time and then putting them into some coherent state other than achievement. Good luck with that.
And each one's got a, each one's got a quantitative element.
Yes. That was, that was intentional too, right? What, and I always think about you, data guy, like, how can we measure that? How will we know if that's a goal, where is there a number that shows us we're making progress or we're standing still?
Thank you.
Right, ready, break.
Not really break, but.
We're going to go ahead then and polish these up and put them out to the board again. Finalizing. Does that sound good? Unless you want to give us some direction tonight?
Will we be able to vote on it in the?
We can vote on it in meeting and.
After we, you know, after everybody's looked at it, no comments, then that's another way of getting it out there. If the board has adopted this.
An action item next, next month?
Yeah, yeah. We haven't done that in the past, but we can't, because it's always been in June and there's no July meeting and, you know, but yeah, we absolutely could.
Awesome.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Suze.
Yep.
Dr. Elka.
Suze is good.
Okay. Okay, superintendent evaluation at ASBA. And last time we met, we looked at policy, and the policy indicates that we shall, not may, but that we will do a evaluation our superintendent, and that, that those will be based on, the evaluation would be based on our goals. And also, it policy dictates that the evaluation happens in December. So now, you have two months. So I guess I'm just going to.
I've got a ten-speed bike, can change gears.
I guess at this point, I, my proposal would be for the board to move forward with the prop, the narrative style, the report that you've done for us before, but maybe right now we could hammer out some specific pieces that we want to see him report, some of the data elements that we want him to show us that evidences this is happening. So we, so he has, Mr. Sheldon has a clear idea of what we're looking for, what we want to hear, good or bad, what we want him to report on, because otherwise he just has a, well, this is what I've been working on, and this is where we've grown, and this is where my, my challenges are, and this is what I'm working on. Why don't we say this is what we want to know? This is what we want to see, what our expectations are in relation to the goals. Because we have these steps, we can say, report back on these steps, there it is.
Short time period.
It's a short, short time period, and that time period is locked.
Looking at goal number one, one thing that we will have by the middle of December is we'll have Galileo one and two. I, I don't know how disaggregated it'll be or how drilled down that Galileo two will be in terms of progress towards reducing minimally proficient and moving kids over into the proficient. But that could be something too that we report on at the end of the year too, it just wouldn't be part of the, wouldn't be part of that evaluation process. But I think at the very least, I could demonstrate that we are gathering this data, that we are, that, that we're trying to get and I can share that information and you guys can get a better picture. And it, it shows growth, so the, the thing about Galileo is each of the three Galaos, based on where a kid is in their school year, right? So the first one, they're in their, let's call it fourth grade, first month. Well, the next one, they're in fourth grade, fifth month, so that proficiency bar increases each time, you know, each month during the course of the year. So the idea is if a kid keeps pace, then they're keeping pace, but if they start out below, they need to do better than keep pace, right? They need to, we need to push them along. The idea behind the goal reading on both ends is so that we're working to move all, all kids, working to move every kid along the performance continuum, instead of just focusing on certain groups of kids.
You've done more board evaluations than anyone, I mean superintendent evaluations. I, I feel like we just need to stick with what we've been doing with only two months to go. Is there anything for this go around?
I think establishing the, the method of tracking the data and information and how we're going to approach it, and then based on how that is, I'm sure example data, but then you'll have, start materializing a path forward. You may not be able to see the results of that, but that's the foundation of being successful. Something along those lines, I think, would be valuable without, the improvement with two months is, you've already done one Galileo test, right?
Yeah, we did first Galileo in August. The second one will be right before Thanksgiving.
So very, very short time.
Yeah, about three months time period, but we should see some growth, we should see some trends.
But you, you don't have the reactive time to start seeing.
No, but we have Chris Abbott. Do you know Chris Abbott? Smart dude. So, yeah, I'll see what we can do.
I'm just thinking, it's, instead of analyzing the, the objective, more of it's new objectives, new goals this year, how are you going to implement them and move forward? Because that, that really is important. I mean, no matter what you do, learning is a willful activity.
Sure.
Is it?
So, you know, there may be years that you're going to see greater growth than others, you may just have more kids like me.
It's never linear.
But I think it's the, the, how it's dealt with.
Yeah, the processes, you analyze that, you gather and analyze the data.
Especially with the short time frame.
Tricia, is there anything that we're missing or anything we're asking too much of, or we're asking for a snapshot basically, right?
That's basically, yeah, the progress making toward the goals and where we're going to go from here.
Next steps. So these were the things that we're evaluating, Mr. Sheldon? Okay, so I know there was a fourth one that we had talked about at any last time, communication between the superintendent and the board. So why would that not be on here?
Well, we, we brought that up as a possibility, that's something we can talk about as well. It's not a district goal, I believe.
I mean, as far as like evaluating superintendent, so is that the same thing as this? I mean, is that the same stuff that we're talking about or is that something different?
So I would say that the, the additional piece of communication, that's going to kind of transition us into the next idea that we can then implement for next year, but I think with two months to go, to flesh out another piece of something for an evaluation, I don't think we have the timeline, because if we flesh out, what does that mean, what does communication mean, what are the action steps? How do we evidence that? I don't know that, we have enough time to get that done and for him to show us in December. And I think my next piece was going to be, this is where we, we have two months to get this done. That doesn't mean in January, we, we don't start working on next December's evaluation. I think we should, if we feel like there are additional pieces. And as we look at our governance team handbook, how do we look at what we're doing and the superintendent? We're all in this governance team handbook, we can base evaluations on this piece for next year. But I think in two months, to flesh out an additional superintendent goal with communication, I don't think we have the time for that, but I do think it's important and it should be included. What does everybody else think?
I would say too, there's nothing, I mean, part of the evaluation process is the, the dialogue, right? You know, board members are encouraged, not just during the, the evaluation process, but anytime. If you have areas that you think that I need to work on, then let's sit down and talk about them, okay? We talk about it tonight, we talk about it tomorrow. The evaluation, you know, it may be officially about progress towards goals, but most of the years that I've been here, different board members have had different things to, to say to me, whether it's something that they want to commend me for or something that they think they'd like to see me work on. And that's, that can be part of that whole conversation. So, but there, also, there's, you know, there's no need to wait till then, so let's sit down and talk about communication, I'm open. Right. Are all of these things new though? I mean, these things that are on here, were they already put on here before? I know we, we came up with these three before, right?
Yeah, so these were the three topics from last time.
Right.
And then the, the additional, the communication piece for Mr. Sheldon was something that we talked about at the end, and we, it was kind of, I don't want to say an aside, but it was something we said, yeah, that's something we need to work on. But these are the, these are the, the goals that everybody will abide by, principals, teachers, paras, bus drivers, anybody that works in our employ, including Mr. Sheldon, Dr. Elka, Mr. Munoz, that they will, they will know that these are their goals. So this is the one piece, and then we can, we can even say with an emphasis, as you share these with us, where, where, where do you see your level of communication in, within these goals? Or we can bring it up as a, here's an area for growth, or here's one thing that you have omitted. And like he said, we could do it, we want to say, okay, Jamie, this is something you should start working on and then let us know where you're at in, in December with that, that would be great if. So if, if you, if you want to share something right now or you would like to think more about it and share it later, that's fine. But if you, I think we should put things on the table if we have them. So if you have a concern, maybe, and you feel comfortable sharing it right now, I feel like there's, the team is in here, we don't have public, but it's a public meeting, someone could read about it later. I guess I'm trying to say, Anthony, if you have something that you would like to discuss, I think, would you for all of us to hear it? Maybe we have the same ideas, or maybe we.
Okay.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I want to save you.
Oh, you know what?
Oh, no, no, oh, you know what, I'll say whatever. I mean, here's my main concern, so I mean, I don't know if this type of meeting, I don't know if it's appropriate or not appropriate. When I went on the radio that day and I asked somebody whether police called for that meeting and I was told, no, they weren't, but I had other people tell me that they saw the police in the hallway. So I don't know what's true or not true. So I'm wondering, did you call the police that night?
No.
You didn't call for them to be there?
No.
Okay, so I'm wondering why that police officer was there. I don't know, maybe that was an SRO, I don't know.
It was an SRO, but.
Okay.
That.
And so when I hear about that, that just makes me wonder, you know, is that something that you didn't get notified? So maybe you didn't, it's just something I was thinking about, you know?
I will always tell you the truth, okay?
And there's a difference between telling the truth and not being forthcoming. And I'm not saying you weren't forthcoming.
Right.
I was just thinking about that when I heard about that. And so I I'm not making an accusation at all.
That day, things blew up all over town, all over social media.
Right.
Right.
I only know what what I did, okay? And practice, I reacted a little bit that day and I apologize to you for that. And I put out something to everybody at that about that.
Right, because here's what kind of got me about that day, besides that, and so obviously that's not an issue. And I believe you if you're telling me you didn't call the police. When we spoke on that phone, on the phone, I told you, I said, the radio conversation was recorded. And I said, I'd like you to listen to it. And you said, you said, I don't like to listen to radio. You didn't want to listen to it, but you were stuck on your opinion of what happened. And then I sent you an email saying, here's the link, I want you.
And I listened to it.
You did, but at first, I feel like you didn't want to wa, you didn't want to look at all the facts because you were stuck on what you believed at the moment, even though I had the proof to show you. And you weren't into looking at it until on the phone, you were not into looking at it, you told me you didn't want to. It wasn't until I sent you the email that you actually did look at it. So I, so thank you for that, I do appreciate that. But I feel like at the beginning, you should have looked at it, you should have listened to begin with.
I pulled it up, I pulled it up that morning and it was not available or I couldn't find it.
But when we had the phone conversation, you didn't want to listen to it, so that was the issue. I would expect you to want to look at all the facts before you draw a conclusion. So that's what I'm talking about with communication and everything. I would just say, I would just want you to be more open-minded and look at all the facts before you draw a conclusion.
I I would submit that what you're asking for is not for me to, that that's not a communication piece. That's a, an opinion, what, you know.
No, it's a fact, what happened is a fact. Are you disputing what I'm telling you?
No, I'm trying to get you to listen to me.
Okay, I'll listen to you, go ahead, go ahead.
I submit that what you're saying is not about how I, about my communication. It's that you're appreciate the way that I responded.
True.
And I told you that day and I've told you since then, that I did respond with emotion that day.
Right.
Okay, and I don't remember exactly what I said on the phone. I was on my way to a root canal, so it was a board meeting, not a root canal, but I had a dental procedure I had to get done. What I would like you to do, this is not a communication piece.
Right.
This is an understanding piece. I would like for board members to understand that I can't just get on something in a moment's notice, okay? If I'm preparing for a board meeting, I think it's reasonable to ask that people are patient if they have something that they need me to respond to. So that's not necessarily a communication thing either, right? That's an expectations thing. Okay, so I've apologized to you for that before, Anthony. I'm apologizing to you again.
And I accept your apology, I do.
Well, then, let's make this the end.
Okay, fair enough, absolutely.
And then, so here's what I would like to say about communication in general. Communication's a two-way street, right?
Yes.
And you said to me one time in email, communication is important to you because you thought I was not responding in time.
Right.
One of the key elements in communication for me is transparency.
Yes.
Okay, so what I would, what I would ask, and the board obviously has the latitude to determine how they want to evaluate yourselves. What I would ask is, and what I do, what I really strive to do, and I think Suzie and Luciano would would bear me out on this. If I ask someone who works for me for information, for for them to do something for me or find something out for me, I tell, I I try to be as transparent as possible. So transparency is a big thing for communication for me. So when I get a request or when I give a request, I try to say, here's why I want to know this. This is why this came to my attention. Here's why I want to know it and here's what I'm going to do with it. Okay, so I think it's only fair to ask that if requests are made of the superintendent or one of our cabinet, one of our EA, that we have that good transparent background information.
Could we also say that we feel comfortable, so if you ask something for me and I'm not sure I understand why you want it, that we have to be, we have to understand, we could ask clarifying questions. Jamie, why do you want to know that? Did a parent call you? Did my neighbor tell on me? So that we're, that we feel, because in honor of transparency, maybe I don't know where you're coming from and and we have, instead of just accepting it, okay, you want that, I'll give it to you. I would like to be able to, or you should be able to, say, Faith, okay, did something happen? Did, you know, did you get a an email, which we often get?
Right.
I should lead with, hey, I got this email or I saw this person at Brownies the other day for breakfast and they, he was, I don't know his name, but he really wanted to know X, Y, Z, can you tell me about that? So I want to make sure that if you don't feel like you get that or we don't give it or you don't give it, that we have to, then to be transparent, we have to ask the question, the clarified question, Jamie, why do you want to know that? Or Suzie could say, Faith, what's going on, where is this coming from?
And the bottom line is, the more transparency I have, the more background that I have on why the request is being made, the more total transparency around the topic in general that I have, the better I can go about and more efficiently and effectively gathering the information and reporting back. So that's
I think that's.
That's a, that's a key, if if we're going to talk about and, you know, I've said this before, I'll say it again, I serve as a pleasure of the board, right? But if we're going to talk about communication, I think we need to acknowledge that communication is a two-way process. And I will commit to trying to live up to the expectations of the board, that the board has for me for communication to the board. But I also would submit that or request that the board follow certain norms or expectations when it comes to communication with with the district.
Well, and I think when it, and I think after the break, when we get into this, the handbook, you know, SOPs, how long do we, how long do you need to gather data? How long do you you have before you need to, you know, report something back to the dean? So I think trying to understand that and clarify that also, whether it's part of the handbook or an SOP or that question is asked, how long will it take you to get me this information? I'm really anxious about it, I want to know versus not an emergency, tell me next week. But I think, again, we need to not just cross our fingers that things come out well or transparently or timely. If we don't hear what we want to hear, then we need to ask the question, Jamie, can you tell me why you're asking? Or Anthony, can you tell me why you're asking?
Yeah.
So.
So I have something else.
Sure.
I'd like to say.
Go for it.
And I think it ties into communication. So the first week of school, when I was trying to find out about some curriculum. And I understand it's the first week of school, I do. However, I think back when I got my principal certificate and I was running a, like a vice principal up at Isaac School District back in 2012. The assistant superintendent called me in, start looking ahead at the fall semester for the next school year. It was the first year of the summer program, I was busy. I didn't say to that assistant superintendent, it's it's the first week, can I see in a couple of weeks? I made time to go in there and see that individual. And because I was an exempt employee and our administrators in this, I'm assuming they're exempt.
Yeah.
So that means.
As are teachers.
Right, and so that means that if somebody like the director of learning services is busy throughout the day, as I would imagine they are, first couple of weeks of school especially, they could meet with a board member before or after the school day, instead of being told why they're busy the first two or three weeks of school. Because I was asked actually by a community member about curriculum, which is why I was asking you about Nocella.
You didn't tell me that, that was not part of your communication to me on that issue.
Right, but I didn't know that I had to tell you. I didn't know that I had to tell you that. Now that we're having this conversation.
And I don't think you have to, I think it's good faith.
Right.
And I and I told you.
Right, well, I want to, can I finish what I was going to say? So I had a community member asking me about that curriculum. I said, okay, let me look into it. I'm reaching out to the superintendent. First week, I didn't hear anything and we already talked about that. Then for a while, the director of learning services, sorry, I don't have time, I don't have a chunk of time available. And I'm thinking, you know what, they're an exempt employee. I would have made it happen if I was told that I needed to see that. And so I feel like that's a communication issue because they should have been more proactive in communicating with me to set something up and not say, I'm busy. So I have to say, I don't appreciate that and I feel like that should be a change in the district.
So was it the timeliness of the response or was it the?
It was both.
Timeliness of the, so the timeliness of getting it done and seeing it or the timeliness of getting, hearing back and saying, I can't do it for a week, but let's schedule Thursday at 7:00 AM.
Well, it was, it was both, actually. And that's okay, that was back then. And like I said, he apologized, that's no problem, that's okay.
Well, but what I'm trying to say here is that is the example I'm talking about.
Okay.
If you had told me, hey, I had a community member ask me about seventh grade social studies curriculum. Because when I asked, I specifically asked you at the next board meeting, why seventh grade social studies?
And I remember that, yeah.
And you said, I'm just curious.
Right, right.
Well, to me, that's that's opaque, that's not intentional.
No, and I can appreciate that, but actually, so here's why I did that. Here's why I do that, because when you and I have a discussion, you sometimes put it in the weekly newsletter on the Friday Report, which is fine, but I'm not, I don't think I'm allowed to reply to that because of the open meeting law.
You can reply to me.
I can reply to you, but when you're saying to everybody on the board, this is Anthony asked this question, this is, this was my answer. I think that's great that you're being transparent with the board, but I feel like I'm not able to say what I want to say to the board because of open meeting law. It's like kind of, you know, so so I feel like you're allowed to speak to the board, but I'm not unless it's an agenda item. And so I'd rather just not say specifically what the issue is so that you're, so that you can say something, but I can't. I don't, does that make sense?
Yeah, but I, not but, yes, and. We're going to have to find a way to get past, I feel like it's personal to you.
Okay.
And that's just what it sounds like to me. And so if, yeah, I I don't know.
Well, it's not that it's personal, I feel like I'm not able to do my job as a school board member when this is occurring. So that's my frustration, it's not really a personal issue, you know?
When you have a question or concern, you want it addressed.
Right.
Clearly, succinctly, hopefully resolved quickly.
Right.
But not in the Friday Report.
So the best practice, and this this came up at the law conference too, when I went in, I I went in and did a session on communication. The best practice is if a board member asks for information, the superintendent should give them that information and then give the rest of the board members the same information. So that you don't have a situation where you have a certain body of information, you have a certain body, you have a certain body and 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 different people have different pieces of information. The board is one entity. It's not five individuals, it's one entity. And right now, you know, we're here as the entity. So I think sometimes especially newer board members need some time, I guess, to learn all the
Right.
all all the ins and outs and the norms.
Sure.
And that's why I think this thing that we're going to look at tonight is going to help not only all of us, but help new board members and help us with onboarding when it comes to that.
And I told you today, I wish we would have had this when I came on.
Yeah. So, yeah, this is good, I'm glad we're clear in the air.
Yeah, clear in the air and I thank you for your time, I appreciate that, yeah, absolutely.
And I just want to tell you that I I do, I I am gonna, I, any of you, if you ask me for some information and there's not, in my opinion, enough information that I can, number one, give you the good information you need. But number two, and I'm just going to say this, number two, know that that there's enough background and transparency that I know why you want the information and what you're going to do with it. Especially if I'm giving it to you as an individual.
Right.
Okay.
Right, because our our policy says, parent, we can give parents, have them come in and look at curriculum, right? Which is what we did, we treated you like a parent. Or as an individual board member is as a community member when they're not in a forum. But we want to be, you know, we want to be as accommodating as possible. But if you had, your your request for me was something I couldn't do also, if you recall. Your request for me was to give you an account.
Oh, yeah.
To have access to a database that's that's behind our firewall. And not only that, it's a huge database that's got all kinds of stuff in it that we don't use. And that our teachers and kids don't have access to. But if somebody just went in and looked in it, they could start drilling around and finding all kinds of things that are not, you know, just like going to the internet, it's like going to elaborate. So I wanted to make sure you had the best picture of what seventh grade social studies looks like. And that took some time for our people to do. Took some time for our people to, you know, put that together to present to you. And I think they did a great job.
Keith was going to add something.
Yeah, you had mentioned how you respond back to the board. As as a board member, we can't communicate, I mean, you and I can have a conversation and you and I can have a communication. But if I talk to you about a subject, I can't talk to any other board member about a subject, you know, that does violate the rules. The board meeting, the regular meeting, is where that conversation can take place. And that's where you would be able to place that topic on the agenda, then to be able to discuss. And I think that we need to make sure that we maintain the board member may place an item on the agenda, even if Anthony just, or in this situation, I just want to put that on there because I need to clarify something, right? Because he can't clarify to the rest of us. If the way you interpreted the response or the way he interpreted your response, he needs to be able to clear the air. Because I do agree, that's a, that is a dio transmission, right? We we can't go, wait a minute, there's a misunderstanding and your response didn't quite line up with what I was thinking, miscommunication, whatever, I mean, they can come back to you, you can submit a clarification on that. But again, that's back and forth, great place to do that. Public sees that we have our conversations that aren't an action item. Takes 10, 20 minutes, you know what, that's part of what we're doing. But that would be, that would be the place to have it. And I think that's why it's important that board members can place items on the agenda and the board as a whole says, okay, we want to hear you out as an individual board member because we want to know what that concern was.
Precisely, well said.
And I think it's also great that we can have this conversation in a publicly noticed meeting like this.
Yes.
As opposed to something that's live streamed. Because I I guarantee if this conversation were happening in an open meeting, it wouldn't be the same conversation. That's just the way, that's just human nature. We wouldn't have been able to have the same back and forth and not, and and we don't want to also. We also want to make sure that that we put ourselves forward as as a, a group that is a, you know, highly functioning group.
Unified behind our goals.
There's no reason to have, you know, interpersonal back and forth.
Right.
Disagreements unless it's about an actual item.
But I appreciate that you, that we brought it up, cleared the air and that we can all move forward.
Me too.
And because we weren't privy to this, it clarified for everybody and it helps me remember if I want something, if I need something, if how I'm going to approach it, I learned a lesson, so thank you for that. All right, well, let's take our break and then, okay, no, let's not take our break. Superintendent's evaluation, December, based on goals, we want to see evidence of what the adults are doing to get us to our goals as well as whatever snapshots of student data that we have that show that there's progress being made. There's not an end result, but it's a snapshot in the next two months of where are we going? What's the evidence that this is happening? Not that it's done yet.
Right.
Right?
Evidence of progress toward goals.
Progress toward goals. Okay, great, thank you, moving on.
Any other suggestions that any board member may have or maybe we can vote?
Bring forward, you got it. Okay, let's have a mini break, 10 minutes tops. Break is over, we're back in session. The next two topics really build on each other, so I'll start with Jamie and he can leave us into the next.
So you guys all have stickies in a box, just want to do a quick, quick activity. So this section is about governing board self-evaluation process. So the first thing. So the first thing I want you to do, and when we do stickies, we do one, one idea per sticky, right?
Okay.
What comes to mind when you think of the word evaluation?
Sure, thank you.
The person who writes the most gets the, I treat.
No.
You really do love school.
You love competing.
A little bit competitive.
Okay, let's pop some out. Feedback? Feedback?
How is it working? Find out where you are and what you've been doing, how you've been doing.
Okay. What you need to do to improve?
Growth.
Growth?
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 Growth.
I will abide by that expectation.
Anxiety.
That's a fact.
Supervisor.
Supervisor. That's my next question, actually.
Oh, sorry.
So when you think about getting evaluated, who performs the evaluation?
Supervisor.
Boss.
Your boss.
Yourself, sometimes.
Sometimes yourself, right? Sometimes yourself.
Your peers.
Can be your peers.
Yeah, I think they have this, is it a 360 eval?
Yeah, yeah.
One, two, above, I thought you said that was kind of interesting.
They are interesting. Anthony, anything to?
Anthony, do your students evaluate you?
Uh, actually, they do, once every two years.
Oh, is it every two years?
Yeah, it's every other year, yeah, it's every other year, and I think every two years, the AD comes in and associates you.
So finally, back to the stickies. On your stickies, what results are we seeking when we pursue a board self-evaluation process? What do we want the end game to be? What do we want the result to be? Why do we do it? No, as many as you can pick up. Just one per sticky. New stickies for the next time, yeah. Adele, I'm gonna start with you.
I just put, um, just see ourselves and where we are together.
I'm gonna do the board members first, and then I'll come back to you. Keith?
All of them?
Let's start with one.
Okay. Improvement.
Improvement. You have another one?
Growth.
Growth.
Effective.
Effective.
Be the best. Like the army said, be all that you can be.
Okay, Adele, did you have a different one?
Just I put improve.
Improve, okay. Keith, another one?
Gauge the process.
Gauge the process. I like that. Anthony, anymore?
Uh, no, just those two.
Okay, we, we, the idea is that we run out, so.
Improve student achievement.
Improve student achievements, okay.
You could roll models for students working collaboratively.
Oh, I like that.
Maybe direction. Role model? I didn't think of that. Okay, Luciano, anything to add?
I put students into this work, just to ensure that you're interested.
Did you get Teresa's working collaboratively?
I thought you said a role model for students working collaboratively.
Oh, okay, sorry, you did get here.
I didn't get the working collaboratively part, so I'm glad you said that.
And then I just said, um, I just had a plus and a delta, so where, where are we great? Where are we doing great things, and where can we continue to improve? Improvement is part of it. Yeah, glues and grows.
Okay. So, last time we talked about the fact that there is a, the only word that comes to mind is canned, there's a kind of holistic, comprehensive
Pre-fabricated instrument.
Okay. I'm gonna suggest that that's not gonna be the best way for the board to conduct a process of self-evaluation. I'm gonna suggest that what we're probably looking for more is a, like a continuous improvement model. Which, everybody's seen them, right? They look like this. And they usually have, they all have kind of the same components, you know, they start with the, the first component is that you identify areas for improvement, or areas that you want, where you want to grow, right? Uh, that's setting the direction, that's the vision. The next one is developing strategies, right, that's your strategic plan, or your action plan. You develop strategies that you wanna put in place to pursue that goal or that area for improvement. Uh, the next one is implementation. You input, you do the work, you work the plan, you've heard that, plan the work, work the plan. You know, implement the strategies over time, and then you monitor and reflect on the process, or your progress. Then hopefully you celebrate your success, right? And then you go right back into the, the next cycle, based on the results. You may choose to move on to different areas for growth. You may choose to keep an area for growth to refine and use it the same, uh, you know, the same area, uh, maybe two years in a row, or year after year. But I think when we're, when we're talking about groups that self-evaluate, like our avid site teams, for example. There's a checklist there, but really, the most important part of the self-evaluation in our avid site teams is that reflection, and those goals that they set for themselves to meet. Same thing with our step process, right? So, I guess I would like to kind of get a little feedback before I move on to see what you think about more of an ongoing, continuous improvement model than a static, comprehensive evaluation instrument. What is it we would be improving? I mean, I mean, I realize nobody's perfect, but what is it?
So what we, we need to have is, and I've been doing a little research on this, not enough to share, and I'm waiting back to hear from Amy from ASBA about the research, but what makes a great school board effective? So if, if we have this aspirational, this is what makes a great school board effective. Then we can say, we wanna be that, and now we can speak to those kind of components. Right, but we need to either define that for ourselves, what, what, how do we define success? Or hopefully get something that's already out there, published. And I've seen a lot about effective leadership and school leadership, but not a lot about, not a lot about board leadership. And so I'm trying to piece that together, but what would make a, a good school board, and then how are we gonna get there? But maybe we need to define that.
There's a difficult twist to that.
Tell me.
That's the open meeting laws. So, in any group of executives or teams, they establish, we just had a meeting, so how'd they go, go around the room?
Right.
Right, we can't do that.
Right.
So, we have to have the policy and how we operate the board in general, but we need to have, and we kind of touched on it a little bit before, we said, oh, we don't wanna do that 12-page, step-by-step. It was either, you know, how are we, how are we setting policy for the district to be able to achieve the goals? Because our, I think our evaluation needs to be tied into the goals that we send in school, because we can be the hindrance. But we need to be proactive on how are we ensuring that we're doing our part as a board to support the goals. And the other piece of it is, is improvement on how our board meetings process is. So, and that's a difficult one, because open meeting laws prevent us from saying, hey, guys, how do you think that meeting worked? We have to figure out how to get, not around it, but how do we all come to an understanding so that we can apply that individually to ourselves in a meeting?
Right.
I think it's a challenge.
This is a great, this is a great
It's annual, but it's kind of hard to CPI once a year.
At least annual. At least annual.
You know, we do it six months or something.
Quarterly.
And with the subject of board meeting improved, board meeting process.
And, I mean, if it can be the whole governance team, it could also be a check-in with the superintendent. Or this month, we're gonna, this quarter, we're gonna check in with the superintendent, and then next quarter, we're gonna check in with the associates. And they're gonna tell us what are they doing to meet these goals. I know they answer to Jamie, but if we're a governance team, it would be good for, we need to do this process for ourselves, but we're stronger together, so, you know, down the road, dreaming, how do we incorporate all of it? But is there a way to, besides a, a meeting like this, for us to say, how did we do, we can't have an email chain out there?
I mean, we, we can certainly, you know, can, discuss, it's not something that we're gonna vote on. So it's not like we're pandering votes.
Right.
So it's just a discussion and evaluation of how that went. So, you know, strictly speaking, yeah, I mean, we're, we're really, this would be the arena to do it in, is when you do a notice on a, because we're all coming together, a courtesy notice if we meet for coffee, and say, how do we think the meetings are going? I mean, that's certainly not going to be violating open meeting law.
Okay. So we've heard this analogy
We can do it in a less formal setting.
Yeah.
And just post it, say, the board members are gonna meet, no action is gonna be taken, right? No.
And no agenda
No.
for action. When the state board event was here, they had, they posted one that they, about the hotel that they're staying in, and that they'd be going out to dinner together.
So that could be an informal conversation.
That would be good, because that's when you can have some real growth and real honesty. So, and we've heard this analogy time and time and ten, but, uh, time and time again, but it's worth repeating, is when we do Jamie's evaluation, we're looking in the window at what Jamie's doing, when we do our evaluation, we're looking in the mirror. So how are we doing, we're doing that one, but we're also doing his, we're looking in the mirror at what he's doing. And in the preparation of your evaluation, you're looking in your mirror.
Right, yeah. So Anthony, I think one thing, this is gonna lead it, your question's gonna, I think, gonna lead us into the next section. How do we know what we wanna improve? Well, what, what I would suggest is that we have the board, governance team, has a document that, that delineates how the board functions. And that's, this is a draft that we're gonna go over there in a few minutes, Luciano, and Faith are gonna talk about, but if, if you have a, an agreed-upon set of norms, practices, procedures, that everybody agrees, okay, this is the way we're gonna function as a board and as board members, as members of the governance team, which includes us as well, then, then you have a foundational set of, of expectations and practices that you can say, okay, I think we could, we could really improve in this area. But right now, we don't have, all we have is this huge policy book. So, it's like, gosh, which of these 80 million policies do I think we can improve? So what, what I would suggest is, you never, you don't wanna have more than about three goals, right? Two or three goals, as if you have more than three, you don't have any, I think I said that last time. But I think one goal, I think in the legislature, what's the one thing they have to do? Pass a budget, right? Well, the one thing that I think is really critical that the board does every year is chart that direction for the, for the school district, so set those goals. So that could be one goal every year, to set those goals, and then the, how well, like Keith just said, how well did we execute our jobs in pursuit of those goals? How, how well did we help? How, how much do we get in the way or get out of the way, right? How much did we pave the way? How much did we clog the way? And then, you know, one or two other goals, but I, I would submit that this year, and, you know, you, you guys can take this with a grain of salt, but establishing the goals, charting that path for our district, and establishing a foundational handbook of all the, with the different categories of boardsmanship and governance team processes and behaviors, part of this is how we, part of this is what Anthony and I just hammered out at break, is how we're gonna treat each other, right? That's what part of this is too, and how we're gonna communicate with each other. I, I think that the, this board, if this board this year could make it a goal to establish something like this, then you'd be setting future boards up for success for years down the line. It doesn't have to stay static, it's a living document, it can be, it can be modified every year, revised, but, but it's a, it's a foundational piece to say, these are the things that we all agree are important. These are the processes within those things that we agree need to, uh, we need to pursue. And then that gives us that, not only the vocabulary, but the, but the, the framework from which to say, to decide, yeah, I think we need to get better at this. So are we talking this evening about changes we're gonna make in that, or is that what we're doing? We're gonna, we're gonna go over the structure of it, and then we're gonna, and we're gonna send it home.
Yeah, this is a draft that we, we got from somewhat, another school district, that got from another school district.
It's been making the rounds, uh, around Arizona. So we, we've shortened it. We've condensed it.
Only 29 pages.
We've changed some, you know, we've, we've changed a lot of the language to reflect our, our terminology and our culture.
So before we, just, as we segue into the next piece, what is the board's pleasure about a timeline for evaluating ourselves, looking in the mirror? When do we wanna do that? How do we wanna do that, and, and what will we base it, our school, our district goals? And having a handbook that supports our aspirations? Or, and then what's the timeline? We talk, do we come back in May and say, where are we at with it? Do we come back in February? I mean, what do you think?
I think it doesn't, the policy isn't October, if you're gonna, October 30th, so I don't think that we should set that goal for us this year.
But it says May, right? The board may do it.
So, so we're, we're working towards 20, October 24.
Right, but we could also just say, how, where are we at?
We can have the milestones in between, but we're not
No, it's not a formal
is what we'd be shooting for, for the first real board evaluation.
So we have this year to get our ducks in a row, and who do we aspire to be, and how will we know?
We should probably have that direction established before January, because you don't wanna establish it in August and then have one month, two months to
Absolutely.
So I think that, that Gantt chart, if you would, would be sooner than later.
Yep.
I'm, I'm all for trying to, you know, the goals, I think, are an important, and if we're gonna put that on, on the superintendent, then we have to evaluate ourselves on how well we contribute.
To supporting the superintendent, getting those things done, that's my thought, absolutely.
And giving our district the resources to do what they need to do.
Yes, that seems completely reasonable.
Okay, Mr. Munoz.
All right, let's dive into the governing board handbook. We created about 27 slides at the end of this agenda. Just joking, just joking. Now, I do have some handouts, in case you wanna take a look at that, move it down. So never tell HR that you want them to help introduce a handbook, because we get really excited. If you tell us about handbooks, or Excel spreadsheets, or color coding, or organizing, we're all in. So we were elated to help introduce this. So of course, I wanna start off with some humor, so I tried to look for a meme that kind of was tied into it. So of course, I wanna start off with some humor, so I tried to look for a meme, uh, that kind of was tied into a handbook. So my reaction when my boss asked, did you read the employee handbook? Uh, I'm not sure, maybe, where is that? We have an employee handbook? So that's definitely the reaction you don't want when you're constructing the handbook, right? You wanna make sure people know it exists, that it's a resource for them, right? And it can help with enhancing communication. So, so I wanna start with something kind of fun right there. So why are employ, uh, why are, not just employee handbooks, but just handbooks in general, why are they important? So I want you to take some time individually right now, we have our stickies out still. And think about, what are the top reasons why a governing board should consider developing a handbook? What are those top reasons? I want you to reflect, I think, how many of you have already interacted with handbooks in an employee fashion or supervisor, as a parent, student? So think about that as you're writing down the top reasons. And then I wanna share the universal top reasons that, uh, exist for handbooks, and then we'll see how closely we are aligned to that. And we'll go from there, so we'll just take about two minutes and jot down those ideas. The top reasons why a governing board should consider developing a handbook. Now, that's fine, that's.
We're just, we're, uh, we have this sticky thing engraved.
Yeah. I love human resources too. Thank you, Suzy, for introducing me today. So again, what are the top reasons why a governing board should consider developing a handbook? All right, so it's typically universal top reasons for developing a handbook, just in general, for any organization. The first one, you wanna highlight the mission and the culture of the organization. How important is that? We've been talking about culture, we've been talking about norms throughout the night, so that's definitely one of the top reasons. Second, we want to create uniform practices and key as expectations. And we've seen this so key, especially with our employees, with our supervisors, making sure that we have uniform practices throughout the district. It ensures compliance with laws and policies. We definitely wanna be on the front page, but not for a violation of this, right? So that's important as well. And of course, I love how we can enhance communication with supervisors, with employees, but just also just amongst users, right? Obviously might take us human resources, but as we think about the governing board, how can you enhance the communication within your body, within your group, within your team? And I think tonight was a great example of that, right? So what are some other reasons that maybe you identified that were not on this list?
I think handbooks also create a trust among employees or supervisors that the process is being filed, followed. Cause you need to have trust to be able to move forward.
That was the word I couldn't think of, I put safety. So, if you feel safe knowing that, okay, we all agree on this, shh, but it goes to trust that I believe that we're all doing the same thing together.
Alongside that, I see it alleviates, at least from the HR standpoint, it alleviates tension, because then you realize the decision is not personal. It's already part of your expect, expectation that you have with an organization, right? So that helps within supervisor and employees, sometimes there's some tension, and you realize, okay, that decision's not because it's me. It's decision, that's what the district policy is and that's how it stands, right? So it helps with that. So good.
Yeah, with student handbook too.
Yeah.
But it's not me, it's not the principal giving you this consequence, you chose the consequence, cause the order's in the book.
Right. Other takeaways that maybe were not highlighted?
I'm thinking like, is there a legal aspect to it, I would imagine?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
To protect the organization.
Yeah.
Yes.
Somebody can't say, you know, you came up with this just because it's me.
Yeah.
Right, say, hey, there it is.
Right, yep. Uh, I put conflict resolution, which goes along with, with what Teresa and Faith had, we're gonna talk about it.
Any other takeaways?
I had training, um, I think, I heard someone say, when you have one new board member, you have a whole new board.
Yeah.
Right, and so, um, just, just that training aspect of making sure everybody has the same information and knowledge base.
Any other takeaways? So it's important to know about the foundation of a handbook, so that as we move forward into introducing the handbook, which we'll, Faith will take over right now, that you have these in mind as foundational pieces of what should be included in that handbook. So this next slide here, Faith will have to take over, but this is the structure of the handbook, and you have a copy and you detect it. 29 pages. It's not as daunting as it sounds, I promise.
No, it's not.
No.
It's a great read. So Faith, I'll turn it over to you for this portion, yeah.
So you'll see that there are five sections laid out here, as far as what, what pieces are in the handbook. And you have a table of contents on page three of the actual handbook that more specifically lays out what's in each of those pieces. Agreements and protocols, uh, section four, that's a lot of the nuts and bolts. Those are references to policy. So we do have policy, um, section B or whatever, and I don't know if it's called a section, but if you look at, in the handbook, all of the Bs have to do with the board and the way that we operate with our superintendent and within, uh, our, our governance. And, uh, so that's, has the most. But, um, what I, we want to do, because this is a draft and perhaps you haven't really looked through it, is, turn the page. We're coming to the end of our evening, and so this is homework. And I don't know if we can have a virtual workroom, um, if that violates a law to have, to go into, um, to have a Google Hangout or a place where we could make comments, or if we should just make paper comments and come back. But the questions that.
Or could they make, could you make comments and maybe send them to me and I can aggregate the comments and, and then send them out, send them back out?
Okay.
Is that?
No, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. So, the questions to consider as you review, as you look through this, take your time. Is the structure of the handbook appropriate? So are those five pieces, are they appropriate, or should it be broken down a different way? I've looked at it and I've recommended some things need to be moved. They, to me, it seems more like it would flow better if certain things were in a different order. What, within the protocol section, like put all the communication together or anything to do with the superintendent together. So do you see that in a certain way? Is there a topic or expectation that is missing? What isn't here that should be here? Is there something that's redundant? Is there something that really, this is not how we operate or want to operate, but it came to us through all of these other school districts and it was important to those school districts, so it started in our draft. What recommend, recommended revisions do you have? And do you even feel, and, um, that this would be a valuable tool for, tool for the governance team? And that's why it says governance team, because it's not just how we operate, but it's how we operate and interact with the, the members of the executive administration. I don't have a timeline for the homework, and I know you're very busy professional people, and I stay home every day and do nothing. Just ask my husband.
Somebody offers one day to Friday.
You find something that you need to do.
Hanging around for?
I had three loads of laundry done before 7:00 AM, so. So these are questions to consider, so let's send our questions independently to Jamie, and perhaps we will have some of the same questions, and that way we don't, we're not calling and having three-way calls and then violating open meeting law. And then find a way for perhaps, it becomes very apparent that these are the three main questions we all have. And then they come back out to us and we can continue to revise, so we don't come here every Thursday night, although the meal was terrific.
Italian, Asian.
What's left?
Mexican. Mexican.
My favorite.
I do have a quick question on the, the, are these copy paste the policies or are these interpretations of policies?
If it's, if it's bold.
Good question.
If it's bold, then it's, then it's, uh, actual copy.
Okay, so all of the words are oriented to board member policy, DIA, this is a copy paste.
That would be a hot link if it were electronic.
But what the text in here is not the actual wording of the policy.
Okay, so this is an interpretation of the policy.
Correct.
But if you go to your online version.
But if you wanna reference the actual policy, that's the actual policy being referenced here.
So since we're coming to the end of our night, rather than take the time to sit here and do it here, go do it with your cup of coffee or your PJs or whatever in the coming weeks, but we should kind of set a timeline, so I don't wait till the last day and then rush through it. By next Friday?
A week from tomorrow?
A week from tomorrow? No, that doesn't work for you. How about for the next board meeting?
We're not getting a lot of that.
Okay, I'm gonna be quiet, y'all suggest a timeline.
She's in a selection vision over there. She just looked Victoria, yeah.
I, and you know what, and I just, I've been looking at it, so.
I don't care, the middle of, uh, October.
Okay. Or except for Wednesday, 10th, right? We're meeting on the 10th, that's our next board meeting.
Is our next board meeting the 10th, yeah.
October 10th.
On the, I don't have my calendar printed, but.
You know what, your secretary's right there.
The meeting's on the session, yeah. But do you wanna get together and finalize this, or do you?
Well, I think we should do something in person, but, um, what, how, how much can we do virtually is what I'm saying. What can we get accomplished? I think so.
So if, if everybody has kind of a chance to review and send in questions, comments, whatever, by the board meeting day?
That's more achievable.
That's fine, yeah.
By the 10th, or the, the end of that week, the 13th?
So we, we just wanna have everything in to Jamie by that point?
Yeah. And then, do we wanna do a shorter study session, just hammer that out?
Do that the following Tuesday? It was 17th?
Yeah, what's that date?
I'm out of town.
17th?
Adele's not here, so I'm out of town.
24th?
Think we had that as a possibility. What do you have going, where do you, you have a place to be on the 17th or the 24th?
Uh, San Diego. Avid.
Avid.
Different district leadership. But if we met at 5:30, so we're on daylight savings time by then, right?
Yes.
So if we met at 5:30 and knocked this out in an hour, I could be in San Diego by nine, 9:30.
On the 24th?
Yeah, that night.
I don't think. Are you going to? No.
No, it's me and, um, Dwayne and, uh, our new elementary coach, Adair, Jennifer Adair. It's the Avid District Leadership Training.
What about the 23rd on Monday?
I was gonna say, yeah.
It's gonna be on a Monday?
Adele, are you back?
Yeah, I'm back.
That's fine with me.
Because there's no agenda to notice, to worry about changing. We have one item, work-study session.
We just do like we did before.
5:15?
Yeah, we can do it on the 23rd.
5:30 on the 23rd?
Mexican food?
Yeah. If it's gonna be a short meeting, we could just have, we could just have a charcuterie board.
I don't have a FanDuel account, but I would be willing to put down a bet that if we ask for it, she would be Mexican.
Yeah.
Yeah, then let's do that.
We'll just, we'll just ask her. She came up with both of these ideas and they were both good, so.
Oh, he doesn't like it.
What?
You do or you don't?
Yeah, I just said, just call it meat and cheese though. What'd you call it?
Charcuterie board.
The HelloFresh has got that.
Meat and cheese bread. But a good charcuterie will have like maybe some green apples on there.
There's.
Grapes.
Lipper is the only thing that'll be good.
Save the table test for next time, Monica.
Nobody had to write on them this time?
No.
I did learn.
Okay, we have set the next meeting, uh, time and date, right, Monica?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we flashing the light, cause it's time to go home?
No, I just take it off.
Okay. If we have no other items of business related to this, this work session is adjourned.
We are right on time.